I'd like to call this meeting the Fayette County Commissioners to order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic in which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome everyone today and ask you to please silence your phones. We'll get started today with the approval of the minutes of the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve the minutes of the February 18th regular meeting.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded that we approve the minutes as presented for the 18th of February meeting, regular meeting. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Three ayes. We'll move on to department reports. We've got Jeff Coleman here with the assessor's office today.
Yeah.
Hi Jeff, how are you?
Doing well, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Couple things today. Start off with the easy one. I'd like to request that we be allowed to close the assessor's office Thursday, March 12th from noon to four for the purpose of an office meeting concerning new procedures and to introduce my staff to a computer program I wrote for, has a database for our nonprofit exemptions.
What was that date again?
March 12th, it's a Thursday afternoon.
Is this for the afternoon?
Yes, just for the afternoon.
And this for training of staff?
A general meeting on protocols, but yes, mostly just training.
So basically just training, closing to the...
Closing to the public, yeah. Closing to the public, staff will be in attendance.
I'll move to allow them to close on March 12th afternoon for the training purposes.
I'll second.
There's been a motion made and seconded that we allow the assessor's office to close on March 12th in the afternoon hours to the public, to allow for in-house staff training and staff meeting. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you, appreciate it. Also, I have a service contract that has ended. It's for a large format printer that we use for printing out the reassessment maps. This printer's located in the surveyor's office, surveyor also uses it, and we needed to renew that contract. I think I got you copies. I did check around for new quotes. The equipment itself belongs to Eastern Engineering, so going with a different company would require a higher cost in order to bring in new equipment. I did include a quote from Leek Management. It would require new equipment and that lease would be over $7,290 plus the $173 a month for 36 months. Also, if we went with new equipment, there'd be an initial $1,284 approximately in just supplies. So based on that, I did get a third request, requested a third quote from another company called Miller Huggins. They were not able to get back with me.
Thank goodness.
So I would like to ask the board for approval to continue our service contract with Eastern Engineering to keep and maintain the equipment we currently use. And that cost would be 36 months, $173 a month, over a total of $6,228. I have the money in the reassessment fund to pay for it. I don't need, I don't need an additional. Just need your approval for a new service contract.
So Jeff, you say this is the large printer that's shared by the surveyor's office?
Yes.
So do they in turn have a service contract as well?
No, no.
This is the only search? One contract covers the full use of?
Yeah.
Okay.
And that contract is with CPC equipment?
Uh, yes, yeah.
Okay. So this other one is?
The proposal for new equipment?
Proposal for new equipment. That'd be our only other option, trying to get three quotes. You know, getting a service contract would come with new equipment with a different company.
Okay, so it's either one or the other?
Yeah, so either spend for new equipment or stay with who we have.
So, does this cover, I mean, I'm sure this printer is getting age on it. I mean, do they upgrade the equipment?
Actually, they have, yeah. They do. They upgrade the heads on it. They take care of any software updates and they supply new inks. It's all part of the service contract. The only thing we actually pay for would be recycling of the tech and, which is maybe seven bucks a month. And then there's, I think it's 40 cents a copy.
So I assume that you and Michael feel that that printer's got another three years in it?
Yes, absolutely.
Of life? Entertaining motion?
I'll move to approve the rental agreement between the county assessor's office and the commissioners and CPC equipment rental in the amount of $173 a month of the upkeep of the printer equipment in the surveyor's office.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made and seconded that we approve the request to continue the agreement with the same company on, with the same printer at the cost of $173 per month for the next three years.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments for Jeff? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
You may notice the date on that is backdated to November. That's when the contract initially ran out.
Okay. It's all right, Jeff. We don't always get things done on time either.
Didn't even know it ran out until end of December. Kind of the outside out of mind thing, since it's downstairs. We use it once every four years or so. Depend if we need to replace a map. That's all I have for today.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you, Jeff.
Sure, sweet. All right, thank you, appreciate it.
Appreciate it. Lisa, you have a conversation for us?
Yes. I am here today because we are going to be moving some of our polling places. Two of them that we're moving, the first one was located at Fayette Central School and it was in their gymnasium. The other one was at Maplewood Elementary School and the superintendent has asked that we try to find other buildings for those, for the safety of the children. So we went out and did some looking and the election board has decided for Fayette Central, which is Harrison 7 and Harrison 8, we would like to move that polling place to the Harrisburg Union Church. It's on the same road, just down a little bit. And then with Maplewood, we would like to move them to the East Central Education Center. We already have C6 there, so we'll put C7 in another room that they have there and that'll move us out of the schools and still keep us in a central location for our voters. The other one that we are needing to move is Expo Hall. I spoke with Ted McQuinley, the president of the Fair Board, and they are asking for a rental increase on that building. Currently, we're paying the 50. They would like 100. So we did some looking and the IC Code 311-8-4 says that school buildings, fire stations, and other public buildings must be made available for use as a polling place or both center without charge to the county. And so I've made contact with Erica at the Miller Building and she told me that we were more than welcome to use the gymnasium at the Miller Building. We already use the banquet hall for H5 and H6, so we would like to move H2 and H4 to the gymnasium, which will cut out the costs that we were paying to Expo Hall. And then also, I've attached, I've checked with surrounding counties to see what they are paying for their Election Day rentals. And if you look, Wayne County, who is quite a bit larger than us, is paying $25 to their polling locations and then Union County is paying nothing. So might be time for us to consider combining some of these precincts and using our public buildings so that we can save that money.
You need the commissioners to approve the polling sites?
I need them to approve that we move those three. We've still got one that is kind of up in the air. I'm waiting to hear back from Holly Dunn on the Fraser Center. She said it was going to be under construction. She was going to check with her contractor and see if that was available for us. But if not, we've kind of got a plan that maybe we can move it over to the church across the road and combine those as well.
Okay. So basically, just the three changes then, right now?
Basically, just the three changes right now, yeah.
I'll entertain the motion.
I'll move to approve the clerk's list of 2020 polling places as it stands today. And then if you need to...
If we need to move the other one, then I'll come back.
Okay.
I hope to get an answer on that probably in the next few days.
All right.
That's what I'm hoping for.
I'll second the motion. There's been a motion made and the seconded that we approve the clerk's proposed polling sites as of the sites spilt out today. Is there any questions or comments for Lisa?
I understand what kind of a hassle you're going through on this and some of it I understand and some of it I don't. Hang in there.
Yeah, we just want to make it convenient for voters. We don't want to run them all over town trying to get a vote. That's why we thought the Miller Building was great. I mean, it's, you know, very close and...
I know every time we get thrown out of one place and have to move, it just, it confuses the people that are...
It does, and we're going to post signs at the other places. I'm hoping Expo Hall will allow us to post something or maybe we can get something out at the park. We're going to run it in the paper and stuff, so.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, I mean, taxpayer dollars, if we can save 100 bucks, we need to do it.
Okay. And I also, I appreciate Scott and the school corporation and their concerns because, yeah, they, security-wise, they can, they can make it a secure area.
Right.
But at what cost?
Right.
To the taxpayers?
Right.
So if we can find a private location that's right in the same neighborhood?
Yeah.
Then we need to try to accommodate that as well. We're living in a different world from when that statute was written.
Exactly, exactly. And my children are in one of the schools where they're at, so I understand, I definitely understand the need.
Because it's hard to, it's hard to secure the gym away from...
Yes, at Fayette Central.
For instance, at Fayette Central, the gym away from the rest of the school.
Yeah, at Fayette Central, they can actually go up onto the stage and walk into the cafeteria and they've had issues of that, people walking through. So my understanding was this was actually brought up in 2018, but we didn't use Fayette Central last year because it was municipal election. So when Scott contacted me, I said, "We'll get right on it and see if we can't make a move." So.
Any other questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Thank you for your time that you put into this. All right, we'll move on. Matt from the Health Department, you've got some information for us today?
Sure do. Got a little flyer for you. Share with you. This is, we are getting updates regularly. This is the one that came yesterday, yesterday before I left work.
You get things straightened on for him?
Are you going to do the slides?
No.
Okay.
I have a different, different ones, but those weren't, those were all old already, so.
Out of date already?
Yes, okay.
But basically, I wanted to come and update you guys on coronavirus and what we're doing locally and then answer any questions you might have. A little background on the coronavirus, as of yesterday, when this report came out, there were 43 confirmed cases of coronavirus in the United States. And the best news part of that is that there are currently zero cases in Indiana. So there's nothing in Indiana right now. CDC is reporting that the immediate health risk for coronavirus is low, so we're still on the low side. Currently, what we're doing at the Health Department is mainly monitoring and education. ISDH and the CDC are monitoring and quarantining any high-risk populations. So anybody that's on a plane flight or anywhere that's a high-risk area, they are being quarantined and isolated at a higher level. Then they move down a step to lower-risk populations and those people are being, a list of those people are being provided to wherever they are. So if there's anyone that's a low risk, we get that name and what we're doing is monitoring those people. Basically, it comes down to taking the temperature twice a day and then for 14 days, we monitor them. But the state has asked us to review our pandemic influenza and infectious disease plans, which we do have at Fayette County, and we are reviewing them. And we're reaching out to our partners, our community partners here, that's healthcare, fire, UMA and stuff like that. And a lot of what Alvin's doing now is updating all our MOUs, memorandums of understanding with those people so that we get those lines of communication open. And, but yeah, Alvin's working on those now, so. ISDH and the CDC are updating us daily and providing us weekly webinars on the status of coronavirus. We have also been provided, I believe, 23 different guidelines now for about every situation there is to deal with. We have guidelines for schools, guidelines for health officials, guidelines for everybody. So, and the health officials in the hospitals are getting those, that information directly from the state and the CDC. So that information is all available to the public online. Basically, you just do a search for CDC coronavirus. It'll take you to the CDC website and it'll have guidelines for home, work, everywhere. So there's a lot of information available. One thing I did want to talk about is personal protection equipment or PPE. And there's been a lot of people wanting to use face masks. Face masks are not being recommended at this time for the general public. They increased moving your hands up to your face and moving the mask and do that to actually counteract the benefits of having face masks. So the only ones needing face masks right now are healthcare providers and then anyone that's a high-risk population, they're having to wear face masks, so. So there are ways to prevent illness and that's the education part that we want to provide to the public. And that is to avoid close contact with people that are sick, avoid touching your eyes, nose and mouth. And the most important thing is if you are sick, stay at home. So if you have a fever or are sick, don't go out. Cover your cough, clean and disinfect frequently touched objects and surfaces. And that's also what we're recommending to do to businesses and stuff like that is when, you know, have your cleaning crews disinfect handrails, disinfect doorknobs, disinfect anywhere on a regular basis that they might not normally do. But wash your hands, soap and water frequently. And that's, you know, the main things that we want to do right now is to avoid contact with anybody sick, wash your hands, so. But are there any...
Basically, the flu, probably.
Yeah, yeah. That's same as the flu, so. The latest word is it's going to be 30 days before we know anything. This is either going to die out or it's going to get worse, so. But it's going to be 30 days before we really know which direction it's going to go. The hope is that with warmer weather, more people outside, less contact, you know, the normal, normal flu goes down, so hopefully this will as well, so. But if there's a, we're going to continue to get the updates, continue to work with our partners and be prepared locally, so that's where we are.
Great. Matt, this is just a, for instance, what would we do here locally if, you know, if we had a really serious outbreak in this community?
It's going to be isolation and quarantine in our plans. Basically, is there going to be, you know, control functions where we're going to get together and spread, so. And that's going to be, if it hits locally, it's going to hit on a much larger schedule or stage than just here. But most of the plan is isolate and quarantine. Then the medical facilities have their own plans in place for dealing with the large numbers, so. If there is treatment available as far as vaccine or antivirals, that will come to the local Health Department from the state and we have plans in place for distributing those to everybody in Fayette County, so. So we do have a plan in place to do that if it comes to that.
Is it reasonable then to assume that if something like that happened here, your department would get support in different ways from this Indiana State Department of Health?
Yeah, yeah, they already have that in place. It's a plan through the state and actually they have what's called stockpiles of equipment and stuff already stockpiled. So if there is something that happens, they have a plan with the State Highway Department that will deliver that. So they actually have delivery plans and everything already together. They practiced them in drills and tabletops and exercises already, so. In theory, we've done them, so we continue to practice. And the big thing now is the MOUs with all our partners and updating them on where we are, because that'll take, the way the MOUs work is the first ones that will receive any medicine or antivirals or stuff like that will be our partners, because what we're going to do is our, our partners will get the medicine, vaccine for them and their families and in turn, they're going to come over and help us distribute it to the general public. So because they're vaccinated, the family's been vaccinated or received the medicine, they won't have to worry about their family and come help.
Okay, let's hope it doesn't happen.
Yeah.
Yeah. What about our first responders? Do you need to say, what are first responders or anything with those?
Yeah, I know Allen's meeting with the fire department this afternoon, so he'll go over where we're at with that and then go over some of their plans that...
The insurance companies and all that.
Most of their stuff right now is just, is on transportation and how to deal with controlling an outbreak, so. So I know their guidelines are coming down on how to transport, how to move and how to deal with anybody that might be sick, so.
Even personally, if it be P for those arms?
Yeah, when to use it. And basically, right now, everybody's got a questionnaire. Go anywhere, you get a questionnaire. Have you traveled out of state? Have you done this? And if it's yes, you go to one partner.
I've had a matrix built for it.
Yeah, if you're, if you're high risk, they put a mask on you and then start taking temperatures and...
I just want to start getting a lot of questions from our first responders, so.
Yeah.
How to deal with situations.
Yeah, so we'll be in contact with them or have them just call.
Okay. Matt, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, do you have anything for us today or... Jay, do you have anything for us today or... You don't have to get up if you don't actually have anything.
I'd like to let you all bathe.
Oh, okay, all right.
We did get our lift going.
Great.
And they put a holy little dump truck on yesterday and raised it all the way up.
Great.
Needless to say, it's still standing.
I like to see you guys are doing a good job of keeping the snow off the hives, too.
Yeah.
We appreciate that.
I'm getting tired of seeing all this rain, I can tell you this right now. It makes it hard to do anything.
So who drew the short straw and had to walk under the dump truck first?
Morris, it's his lift and ain't mine. I'm not getting under that thing. I don't want to be any shorter.
What's the list of areas?
Did he have a hard hat on when he done that?
I don't know. He survived it, that's all that.
Thank you.
Now, that's not locked in stone, that's, that's an estimate of what we figure we can do with what we got and with an additional in from the MBH fund like we did last year for paving. And I think it'll actually leave enough that we can do a little more paving, not much, but a little more on top of that. Did you want a copy of that, Jim? And here were two papers. Secret information. Two of them will give you that.
Jay, how am I supposed to tell which ones are chip and seal, which ones are hot mix?
Okay. Where do you have that one? If you go down, up here it starts at the top, that's all chip seal there. And you come down to these ones here at the bottom where the gap is in between them, that's where the hot mix starts.
Okay, hot mix is, all right, I'll write this in here.
It says surface hot mix and on that first one, then on the other ones, it says surface and binder. It just depends on what we're doing with it, what we're going to put on it.
Okay.
And these are... These are proposed projects beyond the community crossings grant?
Yes.
Aren't they?
Yes, this is what we're doing.
Yeah, this is in-house?
Yeah, in-house.
Yeah, all right. It's a good list.
Like I say, it can go a little farther just depending how much money we got on hand to do it.
I'll study this real closely.
Okay.
I guess right now is not the time to take up the time to do it.
No, and it's going to be a month before you'll be able to start doing anything anyway.
Yeah.
Easy.
Are you hoping to do hot mix first?
Yeah, I'd like to start with the hot mix first, then move to chip seal.
Opposite of what we did last, last year?
Yeah.
Makes more sense. It gets into hotter weather for the chip seal.
Hotter weather for the chip seal, yeah.
With them doing the paving down here on 121, is that going to interfere with any of this?
I don't think so, because if, right now, I've had somebody take a truck and go down and haul from the plant down there where the lowest bid was on a hot mix and it's an hour and a half down and back, and that ain't, that ain't feasible for us with only nine trucks to go that far.
Right.
And the one up here in Milton is just close to the prices and we're just going with them and that'd be close. They shouldn't interfere with us going where we're going to do.
But with the chip seal, is it... Would it pay for us to possibly find some places throughout the county that maybe we could stockpile the stone to get it closer to the sites so that we wouldn't have to be so much on 121 while the highway work is being done?
We could, but see, as far as that goes, when we, when we work in the northern part, we can go to IMI in Cambridge and get it. Because they've got the same, same stone we use down here, the elevens.
But I didn't know about, like, the southern or eastern part, so we could stay off of 121.
Yeah, but I don't...
I'm just, because sometimes we stockpile some stone anyway and I didn't know whether, if we're going to be hauling it somewhere and dumping...
I, I, I'm, I'm just, 'cause sometimes we stockpile some stone anyway, and I didn't know whether, if we're gonna be hauling it somewhere and dumping it, why not dump it somewhere closer to the side?
Yeah, we could, we could do that and take a loader over there, too, yeah.
Yeah, and-
We'll check on that, see how soon they're gonna start doing what they're gonna do, make sure we don't interfere with each other.
Right.
We just have to watch what they're doing.
Yeah.
We've got a lot of cans to put in before we can even start doing anything.
Right. It'd be nice if it quit raining so we could put cans in. I, I noticed, yeah, I noticed you'd marked a lot of cans on 400 South.
Yep, I had them check them all, and those are all the ones that need, most of them need replaced.
Yeah, especially those with the concrete head walls, I hate those things.
Well, they're dangerous.
Yeah, every time, ninety-nine times out of a hundred, when I meet a vehicle on a county road, it's right in the middle of one of those things, and you've only got that much space on each side.
Oh, yeah, and that bridge down the bottom of Strawberry Hill is just as narrow as that head wall.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you, Jay, I appreciate it. Bill, do you have anything today for us?
No cane? Nope, got rid of it a couple weeks ago. On the trail across Bridge 90, I don't know if you guys have thought much about that since last meeting, um, Trail Committee had a meeting, I think it was last week, and the day of, I talked to one of the Trail members, and he said that the most they would really expect and would like to see is the piers widened, just in case ten years down the road, they can get something done, so that, that's, and, and we're gonna move it from the west side to the east side, 'cause it's gonna be more of a safety issue, because when you come out Erie, you can cross there, you're up on the hill, and you see traffic both ways, otherwise, if you go across the bridge, you're on north of the bridge, and, you know, you're kinda down there, a little lower area, you might not see, you know, the traffic coming from the south as easy, and, um, and then that way, they go across, up, and then if they could possibly go over to the county farm on north side of the creek. But that was what they discussed and would like to see is just wider, wider piers, and then there's a water line that the city has in there that will have to be relocated, but that would be reimbursable, too, where we'd just spare twenty percent of it, so that would be involved in the project, so. I mean, it's either side, we've got utilities to move, whether you put it on the western, east, or, we feel the east side would be a, more of a safety factor as pedestrians crossing the road, but I just wanna let you know that information, that the Trail Committee, that's, have you had a chance to talk to any of them?
No.
That's what they said, that's what Kenny told me at the meeting, or after the meeting, that that was, you know, just in case whatever future is, they would give them an option, that, you know, they would like to have an option of doing something, if we don't do anything, then they're pretty much cut off, 'cause you don't know really what's gonna happen ten years down the road with it, so I just thought I'd give you that information if you wanna, to make your decision, if, you know, if you wanna do nothing, do the piers or do the whole widening.
Yeah, we, we've got plenty of time on that yet, don't we?
The engineer's getting, yeah, he would like to have an answer fairly quickly, you know, because he's gotta move forward, he's in the process of-
Drawing.
Figuring the right of ways, and, you know, I have to read, yeah, so he's, yeah, 'cause like I said, it'll-
You want an answer?
It'll be bid next fall.
You want an answer next meeting?
Uh, that would be nice.
Okay.
If, if you all come up with something, 'cause like I said, it's matters, you know, I gave you the email, basic prices that he had last time, but yeah, he would like to-
So they just want the piers widened, that's the thing?
Yes, that way if something in the future happens where they can actually do something across that-
Still wanna cost us the hundred, or the fifty thousand?
Yeah, and the county would pay twenty, twenty percent. Yeah, so, you know, it might cost us ten on the gears and ten on the, removing the, uh, water lines, so.
But you're gonna move, we're gonna pay for utilities?
We'd, we'd pay, yeah, twenty percent of whatever it costs.
On, on either side?
Yes, absolutely.
So.
That's kind of a new point, but yeah, so that, that was kind of what they was hoping for as a committee, that way they've got an option in the future, if we don't do anything, then they're cut off for sure, so.
No, I'm, I'm in favor, at the very least, of expanded piers, but... That would be, that was the, the middle option.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, but the paperwork you gave us last time on this, I don't have in front of me, I'd have to look at those numbers and everything, again, I've got it in there in the office.
Yeah, you said about around fifty-four thousand for the wider piers, and we'd pay twenty percent of that, it's a little over ten.
Yeah.
The county would.
That's certainly not a, a lot of money in the-
Scheme of things.
In this whole scheme of the entire project.
Especially if they get something done.
Yeah. So, you wanna make a decision today, you want, what's the pleasure, so, or you wanna wait till next meeting? How do you feel about that work?
Uh, I really haven't decided.
We can wait till next meeting, if that's- That's all right, maybe. Okay, we'll, we'll make a decision next meeting.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Thanks, Bill. Uh, Bill Gray, you have anything for us today?
Unfortunately, I do.
Bad news, Bill?
Yeah, both water heaters went down to jail, both, both domestic hot water heaters, one of them, the heat exchangers gone, can't be fixed. The other one, the motor went out of, the fan, the fan motor went out of it, um, we took the fan motor off, the old one wasn't in right RPM, but it ran the weekend, so we got through the weekend, and then we put a new one in there Monday, and it was like four thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars for the motor to get that put in. Uh, don't have estimates on replacing the other one yet, um, I'll try to have them by next meeting. Need to be the bearer of bad news, but, uh, the one we put the motor on, that's the newer, that's the newest one we have, uh, it's about-
Uh, we don't need to do any work to the jam.
About three years old, uh, the other one was about six years old, so, these things run twenty-four seven, they never stop, of course, we rotate them, but still, they run constantly.
How old are, 'cause back when I was commisioner before, we replaced one or both, but-
One, that's the one that we just put the motor on.
Okay, so it's-
It's for-
It's the newest?
Yeah, that's the newest.
You didn't replace the other one since then, then?
No, we haven't replaced it, it's an old locking bar, it's, it's been there a while. So, I mean, you, this is something you can't prevent a maintenance on, you can't, heat exchanger, you can't do anything with it, because it's- It's, it's, that's the internal work, though, I mean, once they go, it's gone.
You go on age.
Yeah.
When they get so old, then.
Right, that's all you can do, and even at that, you can't guarantee that you're gonna pinpoint when it's gonna go.
And as you say, that the hot water heaters are used twenty-four seven, practically.
Twenty-four seven, they never stop.
In there. So it's, uh, three times the age.
So I'm, I'm getting estimates, and by next meeting, I should have you some, a lot of some information for you.
But we do have one up and going.
One up and running, and do our best to keep it running, I, I think it'll be okay.
So is one water heater running, or one heat exchanger running?
One, one water heater running.
One water heater.
Yeah.
There's no backup?
Bill, no backup.
Okay.
See, that's what we're in, too, Saturday, I, they called me Saturday, I came in here, both of them were down, well, tried to fire the locking bar, I knew right away, the heat exchanger was gone, so they weren't getting it going, so we took the fan off, the one that's not, that's not going, and got it, got it going, got the other one going, but the RPMs were different, we could, we could only run it through the weekend, and we had to replace it.
So, what you're gonna try to do is replace the one that's completely down?
Mm-hmm.
Are we, do we have a plan to update the other one? Do you think we should do it on next year's budget?
Yeah, I think next year's budget, 'cause it's gonna, it's, I mean, it's getting some age on it, so.
I mean, what is the life expectancy of these water heaters?
Probably, probably ten years on these big boilers.
Well, that one's over, too, then?
Yeah, yeah, and, and like I say, we rotate them, so they're not running, uh, well, they're running, they're running the same, because when you're rotating them, you just let one rest for the, I rotate them every two weeks, you're letting them rest, but it's still, there's still a lot of wear on them.
Is there a different option out there?
Not that I'm aware of yet.
Technology-wise, has technology?
No, they're the same, anyplace I've seen, they're the same, same boiler.
Are these tankless heaters?
Yeah, they, we got a big holding, and that holding tank, that's what, what it circulates it through.
So they're, they're not, yeah, they're not really, it's just one central?
Just circulated.
Yeah. Well, I'd certainly wanna, you'd look at new technology if it's out there.
Yeah, well, and, and when I, I'll have them come down when I look at it, and I'll talk to them and see what, but I don't, I don't know of any for them, that kind of boiler.
Let's see, that's, that's nine thousand dollars, nine thousand dollars and some change for a washing machine, um, four thousand dollars for a motor.
Yeah.
Um, and gonna be twelve to twenty thousand for hot water heater.
I'm guessing, I don't wanna say nothing.
That jail's not costing us anything?
No, no.
There's no reason to look at renovation needs?
I mean, this is, if I could stop it, I would, but I can't.
Oh, I know, I know. Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thank you. I don't think Michael's made it in here yet. Um, is there anybody else, departments need to speak, um, Mayor, do you have anything for the county today?
Sorry for the coffee spill.
The what?
Sorry for the coffee spill.
Dan, do you have anything for us today?
Good afternoon, Commissioners, just a short report, uh, I did want to bring up the speed on the broadband project. Commissioner Strong was good enough to come over to the City Hall office and, and, uh, participate in a call to the, uh, group that we're partnered with to do the feasibility study, I think we spent about an hour that we'll never get back.
A little over an hour.
A little over an hour, but it was, uh, it was informative, we found some things out, uh, we should have some, uh, conclusive, uh, information that we can, uh, look at and, uh, see in about four weeks, it was, was that last week we did that?
I, if I remember right, Dan, I think we should expect sometime in the first week of April.
Right, yeah. So that is one thing that's rolling along, uh, we also found out in the course of that conversation that there are, uh, there's some bigger, uh, grant opportunities that were in excess of a billion dollars that are gonna be, uh, continuing to roll out, and that as, uh, time, time goes on, there will be more and more, uh, funding from a variety of places, because this is a huge issue across the whole nation, so there'll, there'll be more and more grant opportunities, and they did confirm, naturally, you would assume that they would confirm that these feasibility studies are part of the makeup of a strategy and a plan that you have to have to go forward to gain those grant dollars, if you don't have that locked down, uh, they just look at you like, why are you here? So, uh, we're doing the right thing, we're moving in the right direction, yeah. Uh, the next thing, we continue with our workforce development, uh, efforts, the ACT Work Ready Community Initiative is still going forward, we are ninety-eight, uh, percent, uh, complete on our, uh, being recertified, Fayette County is one of seven counties in the state that are certified with ACT Work Ready Communities, and the work of attraction for new business continues, it's kind of an exciting time, there's some things happening, my board of directors is, uh, all in and have, uh, are committing resources to bringing new business to Connersville and Fayette County. Two of my board members here, Commissioner Strong and Mayor Frank, uh, have been very supportive, and, uh, we should, we should have an announcement, I know I said this last meeting, uh, we should have an announcement coming up here pretty, pretty soon, possibly two, so that's, uh, that's good news, I'm, I'm excited. And that's all I have, Commissioners, unless you have any questions or, uh, need of information from me.
Any questions for Dan? You might mention, Dan, in our conversation with the people at PALS, I distinctly remember, I was struck by the, uh, amount of opportunity that they said exists with wireless versus the pole-to-pole technology that we've been recently looking at, uh, I was encouraged by that, especially with some of the hillier areas of this county that are hard to reach either by pole or otherwise, so.
The, uh, and you'll recall that we were both pretty emphatic about any and all means to be covered in this feasibility study, that we are not-
That was one of my-
We're not so committed to one methodology or another, does not have to be all fiber or all wireless, or, or whatever the technology may be, we are open, uh, to best service for the least amount of money, and which will render long-term, you know, good service for everybody in their, in their most remote parts of the county, city is, for all intent and purposes, pretty good, I mean, speed-wise, but the outreaches of the county, uh, you've got pockets that are just off terrible, and, and we emphasized that several times in that hour-longst conversation.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Appreciate it. Kay, do you have anything from the council?
No.
Jeff?
I don't have anything, I believe.
Okay, you got those letters from, uh, that bankruptcy court?
Yes, 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 yes.
All right. Give you an opportunity to read through those?
Absolutely, yep.
You can get back with us, any other department reports or requests, any mail? Jane? Anybody else have any mail that needed to be made public? Um, we'll move on to old business, um, our last meeting, we had a public hearing on an ordinance pertaining to, uh, the Second Amendment preservation, uh, the preservation of the Second Amendment, um, at that public hearing, it was introduced, um, a potential resolution in lieu of a, um, ordinance, um, we've had time to review that resolution as it was presented, um, I would open up for any questions or to, for Jeff, as far as from legal standpoint and legal recommendations, or entertain a motion to? Well, I think first we should mention, it was legal counsel's recommendation that we, uh, take the sheriff's name off this resolution because the sheriff is not a county commissioner, basically, is that fair interpretation, Jeff?
Correct, he's not a legislative body or anything like that, so.
Yeah, so he's not, you know, he, he's really in no position to issue a, uh, a, a resolution, but we are, so. And then, um, we have on the recommendation of counsel, uh, two options here, option one and option two, option one, uh, contains everything, the original, proposal that Lonnie and your fellows brought in to begin with.
Minus the sheriff.
Minus the sheriff's, uh, signature, option two, uh, has everything else with the exception of paragraph three of the, uh, original version, so option two has three paragraphs where option one has four paragraphs, the, the missing paragraph would be the one that, uh, states where- The, the missing paragraph would be the one that states where the county has, you know, no intention to use county resources and that sort of thing to enforce unconstitutional laws. So that's the changes have been made in the two versions that we have here today. Do you want to add anything to that, Mark?
No.
Personally, I got, out of the three, I will say this, out of the three versions, we've seen the original and now today's version one without the sheriff's signature and version two without the sheriff's signature and paragraph three, I got no problem with any of them. You know, all, all three of them are fine with me. I want to see, want to see, see the statement be officially made, just like you fellows do, you know? So I am of no, no fear of which one of the options we would adopt if we do, in fact, adopt. How do you feel about that?
I feel that since we're paying our attorney, we ought to listen to him. I would move to approve option number two.
Okay, option number two is without the language that is in paragraph three of option one.
Would you like me to read that, that's been deleted, deleted? It's under the, it is therefore hereby resolved by the Fayette County Commissioners and the sheriff of Fayette County as follows. And that would have been number three, that although the courts have jurisdiction to resolve the constitutionality of any law, regulations, any law regulations, the county commissioners and the sheriff of Fayette County declare their intent to withhold any expenditure of use of county resources to enforce any law or regulation based upon a good faith belief that such law or regulations is, is unconstitutional under the Second Amendment of the United States Constitution or Article One, Section thirty-two of the Indiana Constitution. And, and it goes on to the number four. But that, that is the recommendation from our attorney.
Yeah.
That, that that be omitted.
And the reading for that is that you're gonna have to listen to what the judge's got to say because of the Constitution, really.
Can you better talk on that?
Sure, I, I guess my thoughts on the subject is, I don't want to, I don't want to unilaterally make that, us to be forced or compelled to make the decision on when something's unconstitutional. Inquiring minds, two brilliant minds could disagree on what's constitutional, what's unconstitutional, clearly, right? So that paragraph one, that paragraph, I, I think we would need the sheriff here to, to be able to be involved in it because it's essentially saying it's, that, that the sheriff declares his intent, which you guys can't declare his intent, clearly, okay? So if we, if we keep paragraph three, we'd have to reword it anyway or get the sheriff on board with it. But the other, the other problem I have, just from a legal perspective, and I don't think taking rid of that, getting rid of that paragraph changes the meat or the, the ideal of this, this resolution, is, is that a good faith belief, and then you guys act, act in a manner which is against Indiana code, could essentially be problematic and could lead to fines and worse, worse things. It also puts us in a difficult situation, okay? So it would be my recommendation that we eliminate paragraph three. If you do keep it, then I think you either need to eliminate the language regarding the sheriff or get the sheriff to, to involve in this decision. But it would be my recommendation to the board that we pass this absent the sheriff's signature and absent paragraph three under the, the proposed resolution.
Okay. Has been a motion made?
May I speak?
I'm sorry?
May I speak?
Lonnie?
The sheriff has already indicated his intention, if, on that, to me, on one-on-one him and I had early on. I would like for you to consider bringing him in, in on the decision, if you could please.
Okay, I haven't talked to the sheriff for over a week, and then it wasn't about this. He's communicated to you that he wants his, a, a signature line on this, is that what you're saying?
The morning of, when we introduced the resolution, that morning I sat down with him and showed him a copy of it versus the original ordinance, he really liked it. And he agreed with it to me, one-on-one. And then I had a meeting with him several weeks before that, talking to him about this movement in general. And he indicated to me about his position on what he would do if they tried to confiscate Fayette County citizens' guns. What he would do and say.
Yeah, I got a pretty good idea what that is, too.
Yes. Same thing you would say, Dale.
Yeah, I might speak a little bit louder, though. If I understand the attorney right, the reason the sheriff's signature shouldn't be on this is the sheriff is not a county commissioner and he is not charged with the ability to
legislate.
To legislate or to make resolutions or ordinances. That, that responsibility is reserved for us. I'm certainly glad that our sheriff is on board with us, you know, don't get me wrong there. But, you know, we could add your name on here, Lonnie, but you're, you're also not a county commissioner, you know? That wouldn't, your signature being on there wouldn't hold any authority.
I understand that.
Yeah?
But can you, instead of him making a signature to make it a resolution, how about just in agreement with a signature block for the sheriff? Leave the rest the same?
I could figure out a clever way to have the sheriff's, if the sheriff does, I, I'm not speaking for the sheriff, I have no clue, I've never spoke to him about this. If he wants to add, if the sheriff would like to have a signature spot on there, I'm sure we can figure out a way, just that, that he does. I would say that if, if, if we're going to leave paragraph three in there, then we need probably to have his signature on there in some manner because we're, because the part where it says sheriff of Fayette County declare their intent. I, I don't like the idea of you guys declaring someone else's intent, and I'm sure knowing the three of you, you don't want to do that either.
Why, just call him up and ask?
Could we, would it be, let me ask you this, Jeff, would it be advisable to, could we possibly add in a line of, or the sheriff attest?
Sure.
And that way he wouldn't be posing as a county commissioner, but he, that would put his, his signature on the page as attesting to the resolution?
If that's his desire, then I think we can make that appropriate.
Yeah. Would that, how does that sound to you guys?
Sounds real good.
Dale?
This is one question, I'm John Clark, I forgot to introduce myself last time. Now, this would be a legal question for Jeff, I'm in favor of either of these ordinances because I'm very supportive of the United. Just because this sheriff would sign with his intent or attest to change the sheriff's?
Well, and that's, that's part of, one of the things that we talked about is that a resolution, people think of them as temporary, but a resolution's essentially, it's, it's a statement that continues, right?
Even the next sheriff would not agree with it.
Potentially, and then, and then you have an issue because I don't know whether the sheriff can, can create their own resolution to get rid of this resolution for their part, right? So that's why I was trying to keep it, and I don't know how powerful the message, I don't know if the message weakens by not having that. It was my opinion that it, that it didn't change the message, I guess is why I was trying to keep it out of there to, to keep it as clean as possible so that we don't have issues. Because what we don't want to do is pass this and then get told that it's, that what we did was invalid and have it lose its merit.
Understand that, but most of us feel the sheriff is a vital part of this as well. Even though he's not part of the decision-making process for a resolution, just that he, he agrees with it or attests to it.
And, and, and I think that's something we can have him here speak to. And perhaps we could even have it to where we do something that he comes out, you know, maybe both believe with something, I don't, I don't know. But, but he certainly, it's all for not because he needs to be here to speak on the issue or we can't, we can't speak for him. But I do think that Mr. Councilman brings up a, a good point in the fact that we could have issues if the next, if the next sheriff is completely opposed to this or something along those lines.
Do you want to do one with them?
Right, fair enough. But, but yeah, I mean, at that point, I did make the recommendation to get rid of the sheriff's signature and to get rid of that paragraph. But if, if the commissioners feel strongly that it, that it does not enhance their message or if it decreases their message, then certainly they should look into it for the next meeting and put, I put the sheriff on the agenda so as he's here and kind of give him the alert that, hey, we're gonna discuss this matter.
So where are we, are we stuck on top dead center again?
Well, it's a resolution, so we're not, we're not at a point where advertisement's an issue, you could pass it today. I don't know if it makes sense, I don't know if it makes sense to pass it today with that many caveats, with that many things that are open to interpretation for the next meeting.
It should be written up in the form that it's going to be passed.
You can always, you can always say we passed it up with this change, but I think that's significant enough.
Would it be better for me to withdraw my motion and then?
Well, there hasn't been.
I don't think there's been, oh, there hasn't been a motion. Yeah, withdraw your motion and table it till the next meeting, get the sheriff here to discuss it, I think makes sense.
I'd like to withdraw my motion.
That would be my advice, I'm certainly not telling you what to do, but.
All right. I hope you guys don't get tired coming in here.
I want my own parking spot out.
They'll give you one.
Talk to the sheriff. Or the judge, maybe he'll share your, his.
I'll break the table till our next meeting. I don't think I'll get the sheriff's.
Okay, well, now, can, Jeff, can we explain to these guys now what we're going to do next?
Yes.
So that everyone is clear?
On the Second Amendment?
Yeah, yes, on this thing. Now, Mark just withdrew his motion to adopt this version. So next meeting, we're going to have the sheriff here, is that correct?
If, I don't know how you could pass it, the current version number one, the original version that was proposed, the version that it sounds like the proponents are still wanting to, to be, to be passed. I don't know how you could possibly pass that without them, without the sheriff being here expressing his thoughts on it.
Okay, so.
Because it's asking for his, it's asking for his signature, it's also asking for, we're declaring his intent. I think he'd have to be here to be able to do those two things.
Yeah.
Okay. I want these guys to understand, because I don't want them to feel like that.
You're gimped.
Well, yeah, we don't, we don't want them to think they're getting gimped or that we're just deliberately running this thing around. I, I think the confusion started with whether or not the commissioner's signature should be on a resolution with commissioners or not. But if he can be a, attest to what we're doing as his, to show his support, that's fine. But this version is not written up, there's not, not a line here for him to sign as being supportive. I hope we can get it right sooner or later.
So who will do the actual changes, you will, Jeff?
Which changes do you mean?
To the, as far as the sheriff is testing to the resolution?
You're, you're essentially saying that you would pass version two without his signature?
We haven't passed.
We won't go without the verse.
If we wait, then there won't be, there may not be any changes. Because if you're wanting to pass the original, if they're, the original document doesn't need any changes.
Oh, okay, I thought you said we needed to change the wording.
I may, I may change the language underneath his signature spot.
Who, who will do that?
I will take care of it, yes, correct.
That's, that was my question.
And feel free to get them any input you want, and they can, they can give me any input they want on how to change, you know, if they don't like the language. I think I'll probably put under oath or attest here, too, or something along those things.
That's good.
And it'll be separate to where he's not actually passing the resolution, but he's acknowledging that he was present. Because it does, it does, I mean, if you read that paragraph, it, it does speak to his intent. And that, that's different than just, you know? But yeah, it won't be a significant change to your, to the original proposed document.
So the rest will be the same, just they won't?
If that's their desires, absolutely.
Gotcha.
Absolutely. Now, that, I will tell you, obviously, that would take the sheriff saying, I'm absolutely on board with this, I want that part to be in there and I want to attest to it.
Okay. I thought it was gonna be something similar.
I think Dale should cater to this.
All right, let's, let's move on then, if we can, if we can. Next, we have our invocation policy. Early on, we were asked to hold off on our invocations until we created a county policy and procedure for these invocations prior to our meeting, at the beginning of our meetings. So you have in front of you a proposed policy, number 2020-01, that will also be presented to the council for their adoption, potential adoption also. And basically, it allows us or creates the policy so that we have it in writing. Jeff, maybe you can better speak to why and the procedures that got us here?
I will, absolutely. So essentially, the county has had a longstanding policy that essentially gives a religious invocation at the beginning of every meeting, much like the, the United States Congress does the same thing, okay? But I, I felt that it was imperative that we have actual rules and procedures and policy that were in place to make sure that what, how we did was, how we did it was constitutional. There's been significant Supreme Court case law out there that has, that has essentially guided the light on what's constitutional and what's not constitutional. And I think our policy does a very good job of outlining that. It gives us rules that we have to follow in order to consider, to be consistent and make it, in fact, constitutional.
Thank you.
Yep.
Do either one have any questions for Jeff pertaining to what he's proposed here?
I read it pretty carefully the other day, I sent it out by email and it's, uh, seems to be an awful lot of procedure for something so simple. I wouldn't say that I really approve of everything that goes on in today's world, but it does, you know? I guess I'll have to accept the fact that things like this are necessary sometimes.
Unfortunately.
Yeah. So there's no sense in me starting to fight, that no sense of fighting, you know?
Is there anything else?
You got anything to say about it, Mark?
I'd entertain a motion to accept this and enter it in as policy for the Board of Commissioners?
I'll move we adopt, I'll, I'll move the county commissioners. I'll move we adopt, I'll move the county commissioners adopt the invocation policy, policy number 2020-01.
I'll second the motion.
The motion made, properly seconded, that we adopt the policy number 2020-01, Board of Commissioners and County Council invocation policy. We are only approving the commissioners' part of it, we're not obligating the council by no means. I assume this wording will need to change, Jeff, if the council chooses not to adopt?
If the council, I made, I made, just for the audience, I guess, I did make one policy to cover both the Board of Commissioners and County Council. If the County Council tonight were to decide not to have this to be a policy, then we'll change it and move on from there.
Okay. Any other discussions or questions for Jeff, all in favor?
Aye. Three ayes. So we're getting started on, on that policy, enacting that policy as far as creating a list of those persons to give invocation. Hopefully, we can get that back initiated by our next meeting then. Any other old business that maybe I've forgotten to add to the agenda? We did get our cemetery thing advertised, so next meeting, we'll be able to open. Great, great. Bill, something else, we talked about was Drive Ford. We've got it lined up with a company, didn't we?
Yeah, when it breaks, they'll probably get started.
Okay, all right, great. I just happened to think about that. All right, moving on to new business. We have Audrey Ruff from the Disabled American Veterans. Pronounced that correctly, didn't it, Audrey?
Yes, Audrey. Hi, Commissioners, my name's Audrey Ruff, and I'm the Fay County Veterans Transportation Network Coordinator. I help with the, with the help of three volunteers, make sure the veterans here in the county that need to get back and forth to their VA appointments, make it to their VA appointments. We have been running with the same vehicles for over ten years now. And I didn't know until November, when I got a phone call from the VA, that they wanted to pull one of our vehicles. We run with two vehicles, a lot of times I have two drivers that'll, will run in a day. I might have somebody going to Fort Wayne at one point, and somebody going to Dayton or another, so I have two drivers going in different directions. So there was kind of a panic, because I didn't know that this was coming at all. It's kind of a complicated process. The DAV actually helps with the grant, they pay part of the vehicle, or part of the vehicle, the county has to pay for the other part. When they get bought, they're then donated, basically, to the VA facility that's closest, which we are with Indy. And Indy pays for all the maintenance, all the fuel, and everything over the course of the time that it's used at the VA. We, we pay for absolutely nothing, they insure it, they register it, everything. But as they reach 100,000 miles or five to eight years of age, they pull the vehicles from service. They want to make sure the veterans are being transported in safe vehicles. Well, I made it to, this one they're pulling is a 2008 Ford Econoline with 139,000 miles, so I guess I got some extra mileage out of them. And even though they wanted to take it, with the help of the Department of the DAV, they're allowing me to keep it and use it right now while I'm trying to fundraise. So my first place to go is the foundation in which Anna's helping me. We transport about anywhere from 15 to 20 veterans a month, but a lot of those veterans have more than one appointment. And so we're doing about, on average, 2,200 miles a month and about 20 trips. And like I said, that could range from Dayton, Marion, Fort Wayne, wherever. I had one guy that had to go to chill coffee one time. That was a little distance. But it took a while to get the prices and the stuff together at the bottom. Well, and I also have to explain that the other vehicle we have is a 2008, oh, 2011, I'm sorry, and it has 108,000 miles on it right now. So chances are this next November, they're going to tell me that one has to go too, because they're, I didn't, I didn't realize. I've only been doing this job about a year and a half or so, so I didn't even know that there was a necessary, the DAV itself, the entity here, used to run the transportation, but they don't have a chapter here anymore. So it's kind of went down through some people and it's been individuals. We're looking at doing two, well, 2020 Explorers. The vans have seemed to become harder and harder for everyone to get out of. They are those smaller vans, I know you can get the bigger size, but kind of like with George's Drives, but they don't have steps or that, that allow for them to step up in the van, or don't have ways for them to pull themselves up. And the drivers are allowed in no way to assist because of insurance reasons. So the vehicle cost to the county is $19,679. The total purchase cost of the vehicle, I didn't get that on there. But the DA, the DAV, their portion, they pay $22,819 per vehicle. So altogether, for two vehicles over the next year and a half, it's about $39,358. And without vehicles, we don't have a way. This costs them, the veterans, absolutely nothing. We take them up at home, take them to their appointments, bring them back. And obviously, I mean, I know all the money's not coming from one place, as a community, we're going to have to raise it together. And then just attached was a couple of letters of support, one including a couple from a couple of veterans and their families who use, use the service.
Are, are you able to get these at stake bid prices?
They go through a special place in like Ohio or Kentucky. I, I always thought it was Kentucky, but this last time, it's the paperwork that I've seen said they were getting on, it might have even been Michigan. The, the DAV, I don't know if they have a certain group that they work with or what to get those costs, because they also wrap the vehicle, deliver the vehicle, there's other things they do once.
I just was wondering, it sounds, it sounds high for stake bid vehicles, that, or government based vehicles.
Well, yeah, and yeah, I, I thought that too. And the other thing too is like the one that we're driving, the 2008, when they take that out of commission, the county did help buy that one the last time. So that van will go back to the DAV from the VA facility, they'll inspect it, and as long as everything's good, and like nothing's been destroyed or that, it will be returned to us so that we can sell it, so that that money can go towards the seed money for the next vehicle. The escape, I have not been able to find out an answer whether or not, where that came from, both. Between me and Anna, we have the documentation that the 2011, or the 2008 was purchased with county. I, I think it was like $10,000 through the foundation and other funds that were raised, but it, it will come back to the county to be able to be sold. I mean, I know it won't be a pretty large amount of money or anything, but.
But the 11 was not?
I can't find, we haven't found the answer out to that yet.
So your request today from the county is?
Would be any consideration for any kind of donation towards helping buy a new vehicle for the veterans.
I remember us doing something in this area a few years ago, and I, if I recall, I think Jack King was involved in it at the time.
Jack, Jack was involved for about a year, and then when he changed jobs, he decided that he couldn't do both jobs, and that's how I kind of ended up with it. Yeah, he kind of said he couldn't do it, and then nobody else wanted to volunteer, so.
Yeah. Technically, I think this is a council responsibility.
I'm coming back tonight, so.
Yeah, the.
Anna had me on both agendas.
There'll have to be an appropriation from the council also, I mean, but we could request that. Yeah. Are you on the county council's agenda?
Yes, I am, Anna got me on both. I'll be here tonight, too.
All right, all right. There's, there's where the decision will actually mean something. I mean, we can send a recommend, or a request to the council. So Audrey, let me understand, how much money do you actually have to raise?
I actually have to raise $39,358 for two vehicles.
Okay, and how does that number relate to the $45,638?
I was showing you what the DAV pays. That's, that's the total portion that the, the DAV will be paying, that portion.
The 22 times 2 is the 45. That is actually a DAV contribution?
Yes, a grant through the DAV. I could bring that paperwork in, and you guys could look through that, too, it's a little confusing, but you can see their prices for the different vehicles, that's kind of the mid-range, there's more expensive ones, there's cheaper ones, but the cheaper ones aren't doable for, like if we were doing really short trips and stuff like that, that maybe we could do, but we got to have at least seven passengers, so that, I mean.
So you're saying that the DAV, the DAV contribution is not enough?
They only pay, it's like basically half.
Here's, the total cost of the Explorer, if I did my math right, is $42,498. The, the DAV will contribute $22,819 per Explorer, and, and the county or the locals will be responsible for $19,679, is that?
That's correct.
In my understanding, that's what I thought.
I'm sorry, it was confusing when I was trying to write it, to figure out how to make it sound or to put it on paper to, I battled with that wording, I'm like, um.
I was trying to do, do some math here, and that's why I said the $42,498 sounds like a lot of money for an Explorer compared to state, our, our state bids.
And I was gonna say, and that's their, that's their route, that's their delivery, that's their.
And, and, yeah, I'm sure.
So I, like I said, I don't know, because I've had other people ask me that, you know, even have relationships with car dealerships, you know, we help, but.
It's probably one of those deals where if you want the $22,819, you buy these vehicles off of this list.
Right, that's, that, that's it, that's basically it. I'm given a list of, you can choose from these 10 vehicles, and if you want our help, then you buy this, or, and I don't know that the VA would accept it any other, that the actual router bush would accept it if it was through anyone besides the DAV.
Right, yeah.
So my hands are kind of tied there.
You're tied.
Yeah.
I mean, you're, unfortunately.
They have preferred provider.
Yeah, yeah, probably, probably, they've, they've been locked into some vendors, or they've locked into some vendors federally across the nation, and, and that's who you deal with.
It's all forward.
Yeah.
There's something wrong with that, too, no? Sorry. They wouldn't give me any other option but forward.
I would, I mean, I, I would agree that the council would have to create an appropriation for us to approve the expenditure.
They would.
So maybe.
That's fine, and I'll be back this evening.
Once, once we get a feel where the council is, then we can do something to.
Any recommendation how I can make this, since I've got a few hours, that I could make it easier for them to understand, or?
Other than you might show what, go ahead and do the math of what the total cost of the vehicle is.
Okay, just like a sheet with just the math on it?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay, I can do that. Thank you, guys, for your time.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Hopefully, we can help with some of it, anyone. Okay, we have Andrew.
Lanham.
Lanham, okay, I apologize.
It's all right, it's all right. I think all works. Jane was kind enough to get me on the agenda, I appreciate everybody's time. I want to introduce myself, my name's Andrew Lanham, I'm with a company called Stiefel Nicholas out of St. Louis. I primarily focus in, on public finance throughout Indiana, do a lot of work around the state for counties and cities and towns, et cetera. Primarily focused on raising funds, capital, for building projects or other types of financings that counties find themselves needing from time to time. I mean, as with most counties, I imagine you're probably the same, you have limited resources, limited revenues, lots of projects that need funding, and ultimately, you know, trying to figure out the best way to finance something, or pay cash ideally, but when the time comes and you do need to find something, there are folks like me that go around trying to assist local units of government in assessing the best options and, and raising those funds at the most effective costs. And so my job is to go around the state, introducing myself, trying to work with locals and, and trying to accomplish those goals. I've been involved in a number of projects around the state, obviously, you know, everywhere right now, jails are a hot topic and quite contentious sometimes, they're usually very capital intensive, also operationally intensive as far as the ongoing costs that you get into in these sort of situations. Bridge bonds, economic development bonds, water, sewer, infrastructure generally, you know, building projects, county courthouses, you name it, and I've probably seen it. But I wanted to come here today, introduce myself, offer my assistance, you know, it's a mutual, it's a mutual relationship, and some of these projects, I've been working on various projects for multiple years before they ever come to fruition, and, and that's a not uncommon theme, particularly when you get involved in large projects, whether it's securing the financing, structuring it, engineering, architectural, public hearings, public meetings, everything runs a gambit. Generally, I'm hired as either a financial advisor, which you're probably familiar with, or a bond underwriter or investment banker. And what I, what I like to do is try to be engaged as a bond underwriter. So if you sell debt, typically, counties sell debt in the form of bonds, you'll have to have an underwriter to buy your bonds, and then they distribute those bonds out to the public market. If you've got a 401K, you probably hold some sort of governmental or municipal bonds in your portfolio, and, and investment banks like us work with the locals to get the debt distributed out to folks that are interested, they save, and they want to buy your bonds. And so I work on the front end of that. And typically, how I get paid on an underwriting is, I'll, if, if a project happens, then I get paid. If it doesn't, then I've built some good relationships, I've learned a lot about the county, and, and I enjoy what I do, so typically have a good time doing it, but, but that's, that's usually how it works. Any sort of long-term project that, that requires a lot of resources, from my standpoint, oftentimes it's best to get in front of it, because I'll spend a significant amount of time going through financial statements, understanding, really, I like to be the most educated person on the county's finances that there is. And I've been doing it for a decade, I'm a licensed CPA in Indiana. You know, I provided a, a little statement of qualifications, I sent along, I don't know if you've got that, I've got copies of it, if you want to see it. But we're, my firm is the number one municipal bond underwriter in Indiana, and right at the top of the list nationwide. And I've got an office over in Columbus, got an office in Indianapolis, throughout the state. But really, at this point today, I'm here to, to. But really, at this point today, I'm here to, to assist, to be available. You know, a lot of folks, particularly depending on the stage that they're in, like to be able to ask questions and get direct answers and not receive a $200 bill for picking up the phone and, you know, wanting to know the answers to some questions. So my relationships, and I would be happy to provide a number of references, county commissioners, county council members, cities, towns, whatever you want, for anything that might pop up, or, or similar circumstances that you all might face. I can probably find some references that be willing to talk to you. So I won't even have to pull their arm, twist their arm or anything. But to be available, when you enter into these sort of financings, you're going to pay the cost to sell debt. And what I like to do is provide added value on the front end for those expenses that you're going to pay anyway, and be a partner, not just, you know, a banker. And given my financial advisory background, which is a little different, but I, I know a lot about local government, how it works. And that's why I'm here, so...
Are you currently working with any counties, cities or counties in this region on any projects?
Well, I've got a big one, Jeffersonville, I'm not, sorry, Jefferson, Jefferson County, sorry, Madison, just down south a little bit. We, I've been working on that for about two years. And we started basically, I met with one of the commissioners, and gave a very similar spiel to this. And I think he took me up on my offer, which was, I don't get paid unless a transaction happens. It's two years later, and we're, we're rapidly approaching, it's in design right now. We're rapidly approaching the point where it's going to happen. But the process, how it developed was, you know, I asked, get financial information, work with the county auditor to get financial information, and begin to build a financial model that I can understand, because I don't want you to ask me a question that, you know, I can't, I can't reasonably respond to. So I began to build financial models. There's, at that time, there was a jail feasibility study that was either in process or had already been completed. So we knew about how much, how many beds they needed. And it was a finance team that was, that met regularly, the jail committee met regularly, and I would update them on how this looks, work with the council and the commissioners, talking about how does this impact, not only from a bonding capacity, but what are the expectations of additional costs that might affect the operating funds that are controlled by your other income taxes or your maximum levies? And how does the, how does this project kind of cascade throughout the financials of the county? Not just to how we build a building, but how do we pay for it long-term without detrimentally impacting the other, the other primary operations of the local government? So that would be a good one. I've done a little bit of work for Franklin County. It was a tax impact statement. A number of years ago, I did some work for Rushville. I've got some preliminary work that I've been doing, kind of like that preliminary financial plan over in Union County. Nothing, nothing active right now, but a similar sort of setup where engaged, but, you know, working, long-term. And that's kind of how I do it. I have a lot of long-term projects going on. Some of them come up quick, and we get started right away, and they happen. Others are a process, and so I'm accustomed to that. I, I always pick up the phone. Now, if somebody calls me right now, I'm not going to pick up the phone. But as soon as I walk out, you know, I return phone calls and, and, you know, try to be as tactful as possible while also making sure that, you know, if I have, if I have various serious concerns about something, or you might be, you know, leading yourself down a, down a road that would be, you know, problematic, I'm going to let you know. Obviously, I don't make the decisions, but, but as far as the financial expertise comes into play, that's where I could give you an opinion that would have some basis. So that's it. I'd love to work with you if you have something. Generally, a contract is pretty short. A very preliminary contract doesn't have a dollar amount on it. It says, you know, it has disclosures because of the nature of the industry that I work in. It's very heavily legislated, and there's a lot of rules and regulations. So there's disclaimers that say, you know, this, that, and the other. And basically sets up a framework that says, we identify something that we might like to work on. If you do the project, we'll come to an agreement later on the fee. And the disclosures are out of the way so that I can actually talk to you about finance specifically. Without the disclosures, I can't really talk to you. If you ask me, you know, how much would it cost to, for this, I'd have to say, you know, well, I'd have to hold off because I have, I'd like to stay in the industry and not, not get sued out of it. So there are areas where, once we get initial stuff out of the way, then it's an open book, very candid about what I can do, what I can't do. And if I don't know the answer, I'm going to tell you, or give me time to figure it out. That's it.
Leave your, leave your contact information, Andrew.
I'll give you some business cards. And then by all means, if there are any questions, like I said, I love, I love doing this work, love supporting communities around the state. And particularly, once I get into, to a community, I try to not only understand the finances, but, you know, where you're going, and bring in additional added benefits or recommendations that may not necessarily be particular to the next project, but as I work through things, give you recommendations of other things that I might see that could be beneficial, or at least to think about. So that's, that's it really.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate the insight. Shane, buddy patron concerns today. We did speak to the commissioner. Seeing then, we'll move on to approval of claims and payroll as presented.
You ready for pay, claims and payroll?
Are you?
Okay, I'll move with approved claims and payroll.
Motion made and seconded that we approve the claims and payroll as presented to us today. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. We're going to start signatures. Pages down. This you want, don't you? Or no, you have a copy of it, don't you? Don't think there's a signature.
No, there's none of them.
I thought maybe you fell asleep back there. That was the only reason you were still here.
Ain't it in?
Oh, you're dedicated, Jay. I'll tell you.
They've already got the garage closed up, so I don't have to hurry.
That's the last of it?
That's it.
I'll move your journal.
Motion made and seconded.
Oh, seconded.
I'm sorry. To, for adjournment, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Three ayes. Meeting adjourned.